Shall I begin, or do you need a few more minutes?
Give one second.
You're fine, nope.
Why is this not projecting? Keeps cutting in and out.
Sorry, everyone, we're having technical difficulties.
Could you grab us a TV that we can airtime to? Go ahead and figure it out as we go. We're gonna try to roll a TV in here. For some reason, it keeps cutting out and we can't project.
So we're going old school.
Old school. It's old school tonight.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Laura, may I have roll call?
Uh, yes. Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dawson?
Here.
Mrs. Harrington?
Present.
Ms. Quinturne? Mr. Rickett?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
So we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance. To the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a motion to consider board member request to participate remotely?
I'll make that motion. I would make a motion that Mrs. Chelsea Quinturne, District 4 Representative, has requested permission to participate virtually in the meeting. The board will consider approval of her request. Members of the school board may use remote participation instead of attending a meeting in person if, in advance of the meeting, each member seeking to use remote participation notifies the chair of the qualifying reason for the request as outlined in BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. Mrs. Quinturne is requesting to participate remotely because she is currently physically disabled, which prevents her physical attendance.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, uh... Chelsea, you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Hornick, are there any changes to the agenda?
Ma'am, the one that we have is, one that we had discussed previously is possibly needing to do. So it is C under the recommendations section, under number two, approval of the bus lease purchase resolution. And Mr. Hornick and I will explain that to you all, but this is to tie up the loose ends with the current lease purchase agreement for the buses we have. And that's the only thing that has changed since we posted Thursday.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Move to approve as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Dr. Hornick, over to you, please.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. This evening, we're gonna start with some recommendations. And these will be items that we will seek action on. The first two at upcoming meeting, and then we'll talk about the third one. So we will begin this evening with a presentation of our draft 24, 25, and 25, 26 calendars. And Ms. Dawson will come to the podium as well. And I'll provide you all a little bit of background. We have met quite a number of times with our calendar committee, as well as our administrators that you see here in the building this evening. And we are prepared to bring forward drafts for calendars. This is a little bit of change. From what we current, our current practice, we are looking to bring forward two years' worth of calendars. We think that this provides a little bit more upfront information to our families, as well as to our employees, so that there is more ability to plan into the future and more consistency with the calendar. And then moving forward, our plan would be to bring a draft calendar or calendars forward for one year, so that we're always working two years ahead. So hopefully, at this time next year, we're bringing forward, I guess that'd be the 26, 27 calendar, to you all, so we have calendars complete two years in advance. So what you have are two draft calendars for 25, 26, two draft calendars for 24, 25, as well as some graphic information of some community feedback. We put the calendars out for public review and for feedback on the website and had...
736.
736 responses to the calendars, which was very good. And then we also offered opportunity, if there was anybody who wanted to provide some additional written feedback. That was not, we did not get the same response rate there, of course. It was for one year, 100 and change, and for the second year, 60-some or so. But we're really excited to bring these forward, and they represent quite a bit of work that we have done navigating quite a few landmines that exist within the world of school calendar making. One of which is, you learn very quickly, you are not making everybody happy, nor will you. So you learned that one pretty quick. So Ms. Byram, if you would please just pull up draft one and two of the, for the upcoming school year. A few things to note that are different from the current year calendar. We spent a lot of time working with our teachers and administrators to make sure that we have a really effective work week planned. And so we've provided some additional time before the open house, which we have scheduled for August the 1st this year, coming up. We would like to continue to do the full week-long New Teacher Academy, New Teacher Institute. That went very well last year, I think. That was probably one of the things that was the most well-received from the current calendar, along with actually designating days in the calendar for teachers so that they know exactly what days are workdays, unencumbered workdays for grading and working in their classrooms versus which ones that they might be doing meetings or PLC groups or other things with professional development. Another thing that is different from all four of these drafts is kind of based on where the holidays fall, there's a two-week, two-full-week winter break over Christmas time, which I think will be very well-received by our teachers. The school year does appear like it goes one day later than it does in the current school year, which makes sense. This is leap year, right? So this February, we have an extra day. So we're in leap year, so it looks like it's a day longer. It's still the same number of days, but it just pushed on the calendar due to not having leap year. And we have, we got some feedback, particularly some of the most significant conversation centered around the timing of spring break and when, when and how, more how to hold parent conferences. Our teachers and our calendar committee and our principals voiced a lot of support for not waiting until the end of the first nine weeks or the end of the third nine weeks to do parent-teacher conferences. So we would like to continue doing them about four to five weeks into the first quarter and about four or five weeks into the third quarter. We did a, we did a survey to parents, asking them to identify the times that worked the best for them with respect to parent-teacher conferences. And the data was pretty clear that morning and evening times were the most preferred. And so what we are looking to accomplish, for instance, if you look at September the 19th, that would be a day that we would do a student early release, and then we would host evening PM parent-teacher conferences. And then the next day, we would essentially have our teachers come in for a morning and do AM conferences, say 8 to noon or whatever it might be. And so this way, we're ensuring that we get the evening conference time that we're missing in the current year with how we structured. So that was probably the most significant conversation, followed in a close second by where you place spring break on the calendar. You had some folks who made a compelling argument for tying it to Good Friday and Easter. I think that works really nicely when Easter is, you know, not super late, like I believe it is scheduled to be super late in April of 2025. I believe Easter is actually the 20th of April. And so when you, when you put a spring break starting around anywhere from, you know, the 14th or the 21st, those weeks, we are significantly impacting our testing schedule for the end of the year. That is massively problematic. And so then we had some discussions about, should it be the first full week of April? Should it be any, whatever the week is where April 1st falls, we start it that week? And so that was part of the feedback that we were seeking from our community. And it came back in both instances with pretty significant support with having, with looking at draft two for both of these upcoming years, which places spring break at the first full week of April. And we would be looking to move, to have that continuously, unless ultimately, we decide to make a change. But that would be in an effort to have more consistency. And our parents know ahead of time when various breaks in time will be, so that vacation planning, time with family, et cetera, can be planned a little bit more in advance. And the goal ultimately would be to increase student engagement and attendance and have less of the problems some with folks being in and out of town. So those are some of the highlights. Yvonne, I don't know if I missed anything there that we would want to draw out. These are here, each of these drafts are here for your review. We would be seeking action, if possible, next Monday or soon thereafter. We'd like to get these out and posted so that our community is made aware and our employees are made aware. And we have some, a little bit of final details. Anything else?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay, and so we're happy to answer any questions at this point from the board. Hopefully, that gives you a pretty good summary and rundown of where we currently stand in the process. And I'd like to thank the principals for frequent times we've talked about calendar and to our calendar committee, which has staff members from all of our locations, including our head start involved in the development of the calendar.
I have not really a question, but I noticed that on draft two, you kept the first through the fourth. Instead of changing that to, the calendar's correct, but the numbers beside it?
Thank you.
Are not. So...
Yep.
That would have, I'm sure if it would have went through, we would have had some issues with that.
Oh, it did.
Yes. Thank you, yeah, that's, on draft two for 24, 25, that should say 7th through 11th. Great, fine, thank you very much.
We will get that corrected.
Yes, ma'am.
One quick question from me. It sounds like we're, you would, what you're recommending is draft calendar two.
Correct, for both schools' years, mhm, yes.
I don't really have a question either, but just a couple of comments. And this comes from my background as a, as a career educator. A lot of wonderful thought has gone into this. There are things that...
Thank you.
I would have loved as a teacher. The two days off at Labor Day, fabulous. I have heard some parents say, "Gosh, we're starting early." But we've been starting early. And I said, "Would you rather go later?" And the answer is no. The only other thing, again, from my teaching experience, I really always felt a little offended when my husband was off and my children were off and I had to go on a federal holiday. So things like the Columbus Day in October, that's a teacher PD. There is no Veterans Day holiday. There is no President's Day holiday. But I do understand the trade-off is trying to figure out how to place all of those things in there. And I do think it's really smart to have a status quo spring break that can be counted on each year, because Easter goes everywhere. So this makes it a lot more, makes a lot more sense to me.
Thank you, Miss, and I think that's, that's a point definitely to draw out as far as the discussions about, you know, when to start. When we look at, all of the arguments and all the perspectives have merit and value. I will tell you, what supersedes for me is, particularly at our secondary level, in particular at the high school, having that first semester be complete by the time you roll into winter break. And to have all of your fall testing done, solidified, taken care of, so that when you come back from the winter break, you're starting semester two. When you have that two-week gap and you're still in semester one, so we've done all this work, we're prepping, we have two weeks off, and then we come back and say, "Time to get ready for an SOL test." Not, it, this definitely works better as far as just from a, from an educational and academic perspective, to have, have that addressed. Like you said, it's the, it's the most significant at our, at our secondary schools, our middle schools, and in particular, our high schools. So, you know, that is definitely something that we keep an eye on and we recognize. But it's hard to outweigh the value of completing that first semester before you roll into the winter break. And so I think that's a very valid point, and appreciate you bringing that forward.
Any other questions?
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, and what we will do then is we will clean up the typo on 24, 25 draft two. And then we will, we will bring forward for action next week. So that's why, if you have any questions or anything between now and then, please let me know and we'll, we'll address that, no problem. So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll move on to letter B. And Mr. Arnold is here this evening. And this, and he will provide a little bit of the additional background. I'll give you the Cliff Notes. We are looking to be very strategic and effective with use of ESSER funds. And we've been awarded the ability to construct an outdoor classroom facility at Orange County High School near the greenhouse. And it also became clear to us is, with the greenhouse outside and with this additional classroom space, it would be in our best interest to add some restroom facilities as well. That could, by the way, double as being restroom facilities at our softball field. That's something that we don't have there. And I like to stay clear of issues of having certain things at certain locations and certain things not at other locations. And so, Mr. Arnold, if you want to talk a little bit about the plans here, and again, this would be something we will be requesting action for next Monday, February 5th. Doug?
Thank you, Dr. Hornick, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Hornick's pretty much summed up the whole thing, almost. I would add that the new restroom facility will specifically eliminate the need to cross three lanes of the parking lot, go into the main building, and find a restroom, just in order to come back out and do whatever they were doing. So it's a needed facility in conjunction with getting a new modular, or not modular, but a new outdoor classroom, which will basically be a pavilion, which will be the other part of this grant funding. The restrooms will be similar to the ones installed at Porterfield Park, which most of y'all are, I'm sure, familiar with. And those have served us very well. We're using the same company, Mobile Modular, which has a cooperative purchasing plan that we were able to ride on. When we first installed the modular classrooms at the high school in 2013, we did that from a bid, at which Mobile Modular won the bid. But then they were able to get on the cooperative purchasing, and we've been pleased with their service and their pricing. So we've worked with them twice since then. Really, nothing else other than the detailed list of different folks that'll be able to use the restrooms, which includes softball and folks using the greenhouse and JROTC, doing drills back there and the band and color guard, as well as, of course, the modular classroom. The total dollar amount for the purchase is $123,559. Then we will be also having to install the sewer and water lines and electric. Fortunately, the sewer and water are both convenient to that building. They're right behind home plate at the high school. So that is not going to be as big a deal as it could have been. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Arnold, quick question. When you talk about co-op, is that through the state or the county?
It's, in many cases...
How are they approved as a vendor?
It's statewide, the...
They're approved state vendor?
They're not a state vendor. It's an independent program, same as we're using for our performance contract and for, for example, the security vestibules have been procured that way.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And just for my clarification, Mr. Arnold, the cooperative purchasing agreement, that replaces our individual need to go out for a request for proposal because basically, they've already been vetted as able to meet the terms of some type of agreement that we would be working with them?
Yes, ma'am, and they have pre-priced their array of products through that type of contract. So we're just riding on what's already been priced.
Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Do we have any approximate when it might be up and running speculation? Once it's approved, if we say yes?
From past experience, I'm thinking we had the product in about two months. And then once it gets in, the installation goes fairly quickly. So my hope is they have installed by the end of the school year.
Okay. I have some, a few questions as well. So as far as the grant, the ESSER grant money, how, is that fully covered, covering the $123,559?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other question that I had is, if you're reading, reading through the contract, it seems very one-sided. The payment, the time payment schedule, 25% upfront, 65% before it's delivered, and then only in a, only the 10% is left from completion. They're basically getting all their money before we even see anything. Have we had this reviewed with the attorney? Because it does seem, if you read through the contract, it seems, excuse me, very one-sided in their favor. So I'm just curious how that process would go forward.
Well, this is, it's partially due to our past experience with the company that I feel confident with this contract because it's worded very similar to the ones that we use for the Porterfield Park, for example. And nobody's coming after me to collect money before we see a trailer, other than that initial deposit. And that's fairly typical.
Okay. It just seemed very high for us not having any type of, really, any pieces of material at all until it's delivered. So they're getting the majority of their money before we see anything. So I'm just curious, I mean, I would, I would request that we have the attorney look through this, just to be on the safe side?
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that this is definitely a standard type of purchasing agreement. I've seen these before. I don't know if there's a lot of opportunity to actually negotiate with the buyer, especially through the purchasing cooperative agreement. But I agree, it's a good question, but I'm not sure that we would even have that within this type of process. So I don't know if you know any more relative to that.
Again, just from experience, you know, they're, they might send a bill for the whole unit ahead of it being delivered to the site, but they're not coming and hounding me to actually pay it before we see a trailer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, and we'll definitely, we'll pass it on to...
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Micah. And, okay, we're down to C. And Mr. Hornick is here as well. And so for Mrs. Anderson and Ms. Quinturne, this is similar to what we were asked to do retroactively when we were addressing the ABM Performance Contract for Gordon Barber, as well as other lighting upgrades. And so you all are aware of a little bit of the saga of completing this. And our board attorney has recommended that we come to you this evening for you to signify your approval of the lease purchase agreement and the resolution. And this one is a little bit different as we are, although we don't like to do it, we are seeking the action this evening just due to the press of business and the time constraints that we have been placed under. But this is kind of a formal, a formal, a formal resolution signifying the board's approval of the bus purchase. And in it, they have asked for a roll call vote. And so when you all are ready, Ms. Byram can address that at your direction, Madam Chair. So this is the resolution that came from our school board attorney shortly before the meeting this evening. Anything else you want to add there, Gary?
I do not have any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Would I be able to request an emailed copy?
Yes.
To review?
Can you say that right there?
You haven't seen the resolution, Chelsea? Ms. Quinturne, sorry.
I don't, I don't see it on, it's not on the agenda.
She can refresh her screen, it may be there because it was added just prior to the meeting. But if you still don't see it, I can email it to you right now.
Also keep in mind, also keep in mind, this was approved...
That's what it was, it's on here.
I think it was in May.
Thank you.
But now they're asking for a formal resolution on it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Make a motion, hold on. Make a motion to approve resolution of the Orange County School Board approving an equipment lease financing and authorization, authorizing the lease of the equipment to be financed.
May I have a sec, or I'm sorry, Ms. Byram, roll call?
Do a second first.
I need a second, sorry.
I'll second that.
Ms. Byram, roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
I have a, I'm sorry, can I have a moment to...
Oh, yes.
Sorry, it didn't populate for me.
While we're waiting, just to clarify, these are buses we already have, we're already using...
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And as you stated before, the previous board authorized this, you said in May?
I believe it was May, yes.
Thank you.
My understanding is just they want something in writing.
That's correct, something more formal, yes.
More formal, gotcha.
So it wasn't in writing in May?
It was on the board minutes. And I sent them the board minutes, but they have still requested this, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we have a motion on the table. I believe we have a second, correct?
Correct.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
Mrs. Harrington?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinturne?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows. Five yes votes and no, 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 no votes. no, no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So that will be exception to the rule, but fortunately, we've been able to keep you guys updated as to the coming and goings of that one. And so at this point, we're now to our report section, and we're going to start this evening with Ms. Dawson. And we're going to bring forward to you, as we do yearly, this was one, this was a presentation that was set for the last work session in December. We have, we sent this to you, but we also want to make sure that we do our due diligence and present it. So Ms. Dawson is going to present the pupil teacher ratio as it stood December 31st, basically.
Correct.
Yvonne?
So the numbers that are used to calculate the pupil teacher ratio are the student count based September 30th. For those of you that are new to the board, the way we calculate our elementary grades is we take the number of students and the number of teachers, and then that gives us our pupil teacher ratio. And we're talking core. We exclude the connect classes. So for example, we'll use Unionville as an example. In kindergarten, they are currently sitting at a 24 to one. In first grade, they're at a 21 to one, and in second grade, they're at a 17 to one. And so if you go down to the, the blue part of that column, you'll see the core personnel that we're, that we use to calculate was 12. We have a core overall of 19 to one, and this was based on 228 students. At the secondary level, it's a little more complicated. You have to take the number of students and the number of sections and, and the teachers there. And so with the help of Dr. Honnicker, who helps me pull this out of Power School, we'll use Prospect Heights Middle School as an example. So for English, six through eight, we're at 18 to one. Math, we are at 18 to one. Social studies, 18 to one, and English, we're at 18 to one. And we use 24 core personnel to come up with an 18 to one overall. There's 95 sections taught and 443 students. All the way to the right, you'll see the division totals. So we average those out. So for kindergarten division-wide, we're at 21 to one. The SOQ says we can't be any larger than 24 to one. And then you'll see that kind of goes all the way down. There are some areas where there is no SOQ. For example, math, grades six through eight, although we're at 19 to one, there's nothing in the standards of quality that has that maximum number. Any questions I can answer?
When you're talking about core personnel, do you mean only the lead teacher for classroom, no instructional assistants are-
Correct.
-factored into it?
Correct. Yes, they have to be excluded out of this report.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
No, I would just thank you very much for the information. I guess my one question may be, when is the decision made to move a child to a different, if you hit that maximum and you're, is there a date? Is that September 30th date?
I think there's only a date when you're talking about kindergarten, and it's a maximum capacity in the classroom, then you have to add an instructional assistant, yes. But I can tell you that the directors of instruction, along with myself and the COO, we are constantly, along with the principals, monitoring our numbers. And the principals are really good at keeping us up to date if they feel like there's going to be a class, you know, overage, and do we need to look at adding, you know, more support staff as an instructional assistant, or are we at a point where we need a teacher?
So it's just constant throughout the year monitoring?
Constant.
Not a set date or a week that you have to start moving and shaking people around?
It's, it's-
It's, it's constant.
It's constant.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Because also, it's more, in addition to pupil teacher ratio, and we want our class size to be manageable, because that is a, that's a recruiting and retention issue. It's an instructional quality issue, but also, for better or for worse, the current state funding formula, your, your average daily membership is a huge component of how we are funded. And so we want to be very careful that we don't, if we weigh undershoot, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. If we, if we weigh overshoot, we're almost guaranteeing that we're, we're not going to have enough funds. We're going to, we're going to go over budget. So there are, there are many reasons why we have to keep incredibly close eyes. There's, on our, on our average daily membership and our, and how many students are in our buildings, for those three reasons in particular, right? Your class size, the quality of the instruction, wanting to keep your, the ratios where they want to be, and it's also tied to funding. So we, we are, Gary, in particular, is constantly watching those enrollment numbers. And it's also, as we get into the budget process, we bring forward budgets to you guys, that funding is tied directly to our ADM, so.
Thank you. I would also say, the, I am impressed with the division as a whole relative to the class size teacher ratios. Very nice to be able to see that you're trying to address those issues. A little bit concerned about the size of the K12, oh no, excuse me, I was looking at the wrong thing. I was looking at, that we were at 24 to one. So we are under all of those SOQs, and I will again congratulate you, though. That's wonderful.
If you keep some of these in mind, it'll give you a little bit of an idea of what we're going to bring forward in a few minutes, as far as positions that we see us potentially needing as we get into the next budget cycle. So if you look at, you know, like Locust Grove Middle School compared to Prospect Heights, I'll tell you, we, so for instance, last year, we had long discussions about, you know, do you move staff from one building to the other? Literally what it did was, it took the, the counts, if you would move staff from one to the other, and just a one for one without adding staff, it literally just took those class size ratios and flopped them. Right? So instead of Locust Grove Middle being at 23 to one in English, they go to 18 to one, and Prospect Heights went to 23 to one. Right? So it didn't, we, just, so just kind of, you'll be able to refer back to these, and we'll probably give you a little bit better picture of some of the things we're about to bring forward to you when we talk about budget priorities.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Next, I believe we have Mr. Arnold to give an update on some of our maintenance renovations, energy-saving projects that we have going on. Mr. Arnold?
Thank you again, Dr. Horneck. We'll start with the big one, Gordon Barber, the most significant project we've done here, actually in my time here, and for about the last 13 years since we built Locust Grove Middle School. So we did the classroom addition and renovations, which is now occupied. We had our grand opening on December the 12th, which some of y'all were able to attend. And the staff began moving before Christmas break, including moving from both annexes into the main building or the new addition, as was appropriate for the grade level. And we completed the move during the break, and the students returned to their new classrooms on the first day of school for the second semester, which was January the 4th. We will be moving into the annex renovations now that both buildings are empty. We will be getting contracts, going for, to take out walls in the kindergarten annex and start from the floor and build up real walls that go all the way to the ceiling and are in the right place for the head start classes to, to meet. And in the current former four, five annex, which will have connect classes, we're relocating two sets of walls to accommodate music and art. And the other spaces will remain more or less as they are. Everything will be given a fresh coat of paint. And I believe we're going to replace the ceiling as well, since we are getting new flat panel LED lights from the performance contract at no cost to the division. To the design in process for the roof replacement along the front of the main building, which will become a metal roof in the same red color as the addition, same type of roof. It'll all bring the whole new and old together very well, and with the side benefit of no longer leaking into the classrooms. And the design will include space for the ductwork above the old roof, so that we don't have to tear into the ceiling to put the ductwork in. So they'll be able to install the ductwork very efficiently, and then the trusses will go on top of the ductwork. Of course, the metal roof on the trusses. We're just about done with the design, and so we're targeting to bid the roofing work out in, in March, early April, and have that done during the summer in coordination with ABM's work on the, on the ductwork. And the other thing is the walkway connectors and cafeteria expansion, which you all approved the design work for that, I believe it was last month. And they're in process with the design. So we're hoping to bid that out in April as well, get that going. Onto Prospect Heights, we have replaced the obsolete fire alarm panel there, which was strangely, both schools built at the same time with the exact same floor plan, yet they used a different panel in Prospect Heights as they did at Locust Grove Elementary. So the panel at Locust Grove Elementary is good, at least for several years, whereas the one at Prospect was obsolete and has been replaced. We completed the replacement of both chillers at Locust Grove Elementary School, and that was also grant-funded, along with the chillers at Prospect Heights, which were done previously. The difference at Locust Grove Elementary is we didn't have them in time to do it during the summer break, so we replaced one chiller while the existing chiller on the other side ran, kept the school cool. And then we fired up the new, first new chiller, and then switched out the remaining old one. So we did it in sequence, so that the school never got hot. Lightfoot Elementary, we finished the walkway connector there. Took a little while to get it done, much to Dr. Horneck's frustration, because we had a separate contract for the fire alarm that couldn't go into effect until the building had been finished. But that's all done now. Everything is passed inspection, and they're using the connector.
And Doug doesn't get 50 text messages from me?
All part of the deal. And we also replaced the fire alarm panel at Lightfoot, which was just very old. Moving on to Unionville, similar situation with the walkway connector, complete with the fire alarm, and the interior work is all done. It's occupied, they're using it. The only difference at Unionville is that we poured a whole lot of new sidewalks there, which have turned out very nicely, but it's been too wet. And so they haven't finished the backfill and seating and straw around the sidewalk, so there's still a lot of mud. But the inside work looks good. Last but not least, Porterfield Park. Some of y'all have been over there. We, once we had removed all those cinder block structures under the bleachers, we found some damage to the steel structure, including pieces that had been cut out to install a cinder block. Fortunately, that didn't create any issues, but we did go ahead and rebuild the structure properly. And then we sandblasted, scraped, and painted the entire structure. It's now painted the official blue instead of rust color, and is secure for the foreseeable future. Once we did that, we regraded the mud up under the bleachers and put down a layer of gravel and compacted it, so you won't get erosion down there. And then we put up a fence. So that's all safe and ready to go. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Can you explain to me the performance grant piece? You mentioned that we didn't have to pay for it because it was part of a performance grant funding?
Yes, ma'am. It's called a performance contract. And we have done three phases of that now. The first phase was done in 2013 and 14. A performance contract is a contract wherein a contractor comes in and will guarantee the energy savings from the work that they do. So in this case, ABM has guaranteed energy savings of about four and a half million dollars. We're having to pay part of the cost for the HVA system that's going in at Gordon Barber next summer. But that system would have cost us over $3 million, so what we're having to pay on that part is about 1.2. So the rest is all covered by energy savings, and it's guaranteed for the entire period of 25 years. And the first phase we did in 2013, we addressed lighting and HVAC and water conservation and any number of issues. That contract was 6.2 million. And we found that the energy savings was typically a good percentage higher than the guarantee. You know, we're putting another tens of thousand dollars back in our pocket from, from the savings that they gave us. And so, and Phase Two was Locust Grove Elementary School, which was closed when we did Phase One, therefore no savings to be had because it was shut down. So three years later, we came back and did that school. But what we're doing now, Phases One and Two, we used high efficiency fluorescent light bulbs. And in the 10 years since, the cost of LED bulbs has come down enough and they've become so efficient that they're able to do the same thing again, once again, installing new light bulbs. And they're doing a few more HVAC-related things, the main one being Gordon Barber, to completely eliminate the two-pipe system and come in with a VRF system, which will be very efficient and will no longer have condensating water dripping in the cabinets and in the classrooms.
That's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
And each classroom will be able to be individually controlled for, to an extent allowable that we allow them for, for heating and cooling.
Yeah, we, we do limit that. We don't want people turning the thermostat up to 80 in the winter, for example. So we keep them within a range, but we do give them some control. Another benefit is that with LED bulbs, the need for custodians to replace light bulbs will be practically nonexistent. So, you know, bonus to the program.
Thank you. I would also, I was wondering, how are these projects determined? How are they prioritized? I know we don't have a full master plan, but some of my experience is that there are deferred maintenance type of projects that are identified and then done over a three to five-year period. I'm just wondering, how do you do this here?
Well, we work with Dr. Horneck and Mr. Honnicker, and with Marshall Rutter, the director here, and others. And each principal will put in their requests of what their priorities are, and we'll look at the budget and figure out, you know, how we can get these done, and what really should be done within the year, and what can be postponed to, you know, a year, two, three years. And-
I'll tell you, with Gordon Barber, it got moved to the top very quickly when, this must have been two Decembers ago at this point, ABM did some testing in the pipes and had 30-some percent, basically the, the pipes were clogged and rusted out. So we weren't, we, it got to the point where we were worried the system wasn't going to last, because we're not getting the amount of flow through the two-pipe system you would need. So that, that moved Gordon Barber's HVAC replacement up the list pretty quickly because it was, no air in a building is going to shut us down. So that shot to the top pretty quickly when we saw the degradation in the pipes.
Yes, and I would add that we would have a very difficult time affording the cost because the cost at Gordon Barber was more than twice the cost of a larger system at Orange Elementary, because we were able to use the same pipes. They were in better shape than the ones at Gordon Barber. So we were, it was very fortunate that we could do the project, but it was pretty much essential. We would have gone begging to the county for about 3.3 million dollars otherwise.
Thank you again for your information and for the comprehensive process, and I appreciate that you work with staff and the different sites to make sure that their needs are at least looked at also. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And last this evening for me, and Mr. Honnicker, he was hoping to get out of that one, is our budget priorities. And this is truly just meant- And this is truly just meant to be a starting point of where we're headed to. And I believe as we were looking at our budget calendar that was approved in December or late November, I know we have an opportunity for the public to provide some comment about what they see in the budget, what they would like to see at this upcoming meeting. And then we have slated for the next work session, February the 26th, I believe it is, would be when we bring a proposed budget forward to the board to consider. We are hoping at that time that the House and the Senate and the General Assembly will have acted, so to speak, and had hopefully just one version of a budget. Sometimes there are three. You have the House version, the Senate version and the governor's version. So you have a little bit of a moving target. But hopefully there will be some action there. Last year it was somewhere in the middle of February when the General Assembly...
The House and the Senate generally will come out with one in the middle of February.
Middle of February. And then what that means is the Department of Ed will roll out a CAC tool for us to utilize. And that gives us a better starting point and a little bit more, a little bit clearer vision of where the state budget might go. However, we are confident to bring forward some priorities to you this evening and just give you some, along the lines of what we're thinking at this point, if you could go forward, Laura. So we'll start in kind of the salary and benefits. And one of the things, go ahead, Lauren, one of the things we definitely want to do, and we were able to repeat this from last year, we want to continue our ability to not pass rising health insurance costs off on our employees. Anything you wanted to add there, Gary?
Yes, we did get some good news on that. We got to projected rates for next year and the health insurance is going to be around 4% and a dental insurance increase of 4%. And dental is an increase of about 1.5%. And we were told that if you're under 10 right now, you're doing pretty well. So we were pretty happy with that.
Right now by, and this is simply, we're trying to take a look at what other divisions are doing. We are thinking somewhere to the effect of around a 2% pay raise for full-time employees and we are actively finding ways to pursue an additional increase on our teacher scale. That would be the scale that we want to target, that we want to be able to do more than 2% for. The reason that I'm a little bit non-committal right at the moment is the current CAC tool based on the governor's budget does not include the state portion of funding for a pay increase. What is built in right now is a 1% bonus. So there isn't money currently for FY '25 for a pay increase. I believe that through budget negotiations, we will see that change and we will see some state money there. And so we're going to target a number that's in addition to that 2% for our teachers. We really need it in that area. And we are hoping that we will have a little bit clearer picture of where the state revenues will be by the time we get to presenting a proposed budget, February the 26th, which we will do either way. We're just hopeful we'll have a little bit of a clearer picture.
Yes, hope so, yes.
Anything you want to add there?
No, I think we've covered it.
And the reason that we're looking to attack the pay scale, and Gary, I'll let you speak to this chart here.
Not a whole lot of good things to say about this chart. As you can see, we're well behind the average in our surrounding communities. These are the divisions that we requested a couple of years ago to use, so we have continued with that. But I've also added a last row over there, which includes Culpeper, Louisa and Spotsylvania. It was kind of targeted as our biggest competition or where we seem to be having the most loss of staff or potential staff. So as you can see, we're well behind. We're not quite as bad at the beginning of the scales, but it gets kind of bigger division as we go along. So we got a lot of ground to make up here. We've been working on it, trying to gain some ground, but it just doesn't seem like we're making enough progress. So we're going to try to get some additional compensation for the teachers again this year, so.
And so this chart here shows what are, you know, at kind of the milestone years, 0 to 30. So this is a teacher with a bachelor's. And then the next slide is the same milestone years identified and where we stand with teachers with master's degrees relative to the average of all, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 or 7, and then the average for our closest to 3, Spotsylvania, Culpeper and Louisa. And so moving forward, when we look at positions...
Is it okay to jump in and ask a question?
Of course, please.
So it looks like new teachers were competitive.
Much better than the rest, yes.
So again, not asking for the answer right now, just some things that kind of come to my mind. So the step in the years, you know, we're going out to 30. Like to know in the future, the next time we discuss this, what's our ratios? You know, how many 30-year teachers do we have? How many between 20... You got me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, and then secondly, out of the box ideas and how to target, you know, you had just mentioned the state, they're calling it a bonus. Is that what they're calling it, the 1%?
That's, and that's the governor's proposed budget at this point, yes.
You know, so a bonus means one time hit.
That's correct, yes.
Then it goes, so next year, it falls on the locality for...
Well, actually just a one-time bonus. You don't...
That's what I mean, so.
It doesn't impact the scale at all. It's something that's paid out and then your salaries are at the scale.
Right.
Right.
But we're giving someone money one year and then not giving it to him possibly the next year.
That would be correct, yes.
That's a tough one.
Which is why I don't, I think you'll see a change in the state budget. I don't think that's going to stick, but...
Right. Again, I'd love to see some out of the box thinking, creativity, you know, along with Ms. Dawson of, you know, how can we target that without falling into those holes, those traps, you know, a little bit? You know, to give an individual, an employee, you know, an additional bonus and then, well, you were worth it that year, but not the following year. That doesn't seem like a solution to me. That seems like a Band-Aid. So those are the only two things that I had, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rickett. And so we'll talk a little bit about the positions. And for those of you, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Quintern from on the board last year and others who were just kind of following along, we spoke pretty much ad nauseam about the pending, what we call the ESER cliff. And we were hoping, in last year's budget, as part of our ask, to begin to wean off of ESER and move some positions into operating. And the numbers did not line up and we weren't able to accomplish that. So we have some looming decisions here to make. This slide here is germane specifically to special education and addressing our special needs populations. And due to just flat out rising numbers, and Ms. Ailer is here and she can provide any background that she is able to, we know 100% that we're going to have to add two positions next year into the budget in order to ensure that we have enough staffing. This is two new teaching positions in the budget. So we can add two self-contained programs into two of our elementary schools. We also know that those students also have transportation needs. We have the bus, we have the capital, but we know that we're going to need two employees, a driver and a monitor, correct, Justin? In order to facilitate transportation of our students. It is very clear to us that currently in ESER, we're going to need to continue 13 positions that we currently have, right? This is not new. These folks are working in our building as we speak right now today, paid for out of ESER, which goes away September 30th. And we have to have these folks, we've done a deep dive to make sure that we're not violating federal law and we are meeting IEP accommodations. And so that's 13 positions that we have had over the last three years that has been paid from federal dollars that now is going to fall to not being paid out of federal dollars. Will fall to the locality. And Gary, if you want to talk a little bit about the Title 6B grant, we have some positions there. And there are some trouble spots with 6B funding and we know those six and a half positions are going to have to come over to operating as well.
That's correct. So 6B is a federal grant for special education. And what we have been able to do for several years is we've had funds left over from one year that we carry forward to the next. So we've kind of been working over this, that carry for amount, carry forward amount. Around the time a COVID hit, I got with Mrs. Ailer and I said, hey, we're running into trouble. We're running, you know, the funds are running out for 6B past our current year. And we didn't have as much spending during those years on outside services and materials. So we were able to prolong that a little bit. But we're at the point now with the rising salaries and cost that the amount in the budget for one year of 6B grant is more than our expenses that's in there currently, projecting next year's increases in salaries and so forth. So I have to take, reduce that 6B grant and put it into operating now because the only thing I have now is one year's worth of that grant, which is I think just over a million dollars. Is that correct? Yes. Yeah. So that's how that's come about, so.
So again, this is something we've been able, kind of like ESER positions, we've been able to prolong and kind of save on the operating side and not have to have such a big ask, so to speak. But again, this is where the rubber hits the road when it comes to ESER. If you could go to the next one, Lauren, this is the...
Before we go to the next one, so kudos on stretching the dollar, absolutely. So Ms. Ailer, just to clarify, so new teacher positions, those are, that's mandated. We have no option. Correct. The transportation, also mandated, no option. Okay, great. The ESER positions, are you seeing anything coming out of the House or the Senate that will help localities cover? Because that now is a, I hate to use the word mandated, but that's really what it is. So it's, the federal government paid for it, now they mandated it, then they pulled the money and now it's left on the localities. Okay, so are you seeing anything in the Senate or the House that is going to assist small rural counties like ours to help these 13 positions? Because those also are mandated.
For a little clarity though, because they are mandated, that these were positions that were in the federal funds, but a part of this is coming from the increase in the number of special education students that we have.
Right.
So it's mandated the hours, service hours and that type of things. She knows it a lot better and she uses a lot of acronyms when she tells you, but anyway.
Please don't confuse me.
But a lot of this is stemming from just in our increase in the number of special education students, so.
As well as widely differing needs and an expansion of needs within that cohort of student, that can really change year to year and over time. So we have seen a tremendous difference, not only numerically, but also needs-wise.
And that is sticked data by IEP, correct? Okay, I'm doing good.
And then Mr. Rickett, I will tell you, so one thing that has helped broadly speaking, when we had the financial crisis in, well, I guess which one, probably around 2012-ish, somewhere in that timeframe, we had the state implemented what's called a support cap. And so there was a cap placed on the amount of state dollars being infused into schools to help cover support positions, like an instructional assistant in particular. And so it was capped at 20, how did this go? 20 positions per 1,000 students, I believe is what it was. When the most, when we've got a budget passed and it was passed in September, one of the provisions was a partial repeal of the support cap. So the state began to implement and provide funding for 24 support personnel per 1,000 students. And so part of, a really good place to start as far as legislative advocacy would be to get us back to a point where the support cap is completely repealed. And I believe that number, it was, it's a percentage, it was a decimal. It's somewhere between 26 and 27 support positions per 1,000 students. And so some of this cliff, I mean, that was a help because that does mean more money for support positions, but it does not completely cover it. In fact, it's really not even close.
Well, I was at a conference and he's talking about the budget, actually. And they said there's an estimated 21,000 instructional assistants employed and 3,000...
Across the Commonwealth.
Across the Commonwealth.
Not in Orange County.
And 3,000 of those funded, so.
So I, I mean, just as, you know, from what I understand with the ESER funding is that, you know, we, as a division, decided to use that money towards our students specifically. So we chose the path of putting teachers in place with that money versus some other counties decided to use it for other things that didn't necessarily affect the students, so.
That's correct.
So as far as being mandatory, we chose to make it mandatory in a way because we chose to put it into the teacher.
Madam, and I would say we didn't choose, the mandatory requirement was already there. We just chose to do, use a different type of funding that was available to us at that point rather than funding it out of our operating budget, which we would have anyway, correct?
I would say that's fair. So I will step back a moment because many of the decisions with respect to ESER were made pre-my arrival. What I can tell you is that when I'm looking back at how positions were created, it was, the positions that were created were to address, make sure we weren't violating a federal law. That's always an important one. And two, we put ones in place that we truly felt were going to help students get over the hurdle, right? We didn't leave it to, well, let's purchase, you know, just all these online programs and have them do this and have them go and do these things. We invested in people. And if we were at a point where, in this case, if our situation globally within the student services world looked different, we probably wouldn't have to say we need to carry 13 ESER positions. I'm bringing this forward to show that there are not 13 new beyond what we already have. We have them working, but we can't just say COVID's over, we don't need them anymore, right? So the federal dollars aren't necessarily expiring at the same time that our student needs are expiring, right? I mean, that becomes a little bit of the issue. I think, quite honestly, all of you are correct in how you are framing this. And yes, I'm very proud, looking back at what you all did with respective decisions to make to how to address the learning loss at the time. That's as far superior than what other divisions did, quite frankly. I mean, even though it was going to be uncomfortable moving into the future and you knew that the day of reckoning, i.e. today, was going to be here, still did what was right for students. And I think that's commendable.
I think all of us are going to be paying attention, but just keep us up to speed on anything you hear coming out of the House and the Senate and the state. on anything you hear coming out of the House and the Senate and the state. And, you know, are they going to be able to assist for some of the things that, positions that we can't lose from a legal standpoint?
I certainly will. And like I say, the biggest update we'll have now is when those CAC tools come out from the House and Senate budgets. So we'll be sure and let you know when that is.
Just one more comment, please. Number one, I wanted to thank you again for using your carryover, your prior year funding, using it in a thoughtful manner to make sure that you are supporting the most needy students that we have. In addition to that, I'm just, this is just my mind wondering how the accounting works. So for your Title VI B, you're going to be moving the expenditure into your operating budget now because you no longer have that carry forward funds.
That's correct. So what I really have to do is, grant spending is, what you spend is what you get.
Yes.
So what I have to, if I know what I'm going to get, I have to figure out what I'm going to spend. So in order to make those match, I'm going to have to take some funds out of the VI B and move them into operating.
So the reason, I totally understand that, that makes sense to me. Thank you. I'm just wondering, from the standpoint of, as Jack was mentioning, the funding, the level of funding that we get from both the state and the federal is just minimal relative to the cost of education for our special education students. Is that correct?
The federal government has never fully funded IDEA as is written in legislation.
So they're giving us about 14 cents on the dollar, something around there for that mandate?
I'd hate to say without going back to check.
I can say federal funding is about probably 2% to 3% of the entire budget.
It's a small percentage.
Yeah.
The amount of funding through VI and part of our state funding is based on the number of students that we have. However, it doesn't necessarily mean it's increasing at the same rate as the number of students that we have.
Basically, absolutely, I understand. The federal government has provided these mandates for service and is completely underfunding that need for us.
Well, and I'll tell you, fortunately, I mean, fortunately in Virginia, I mean, the state has, the state has higher standards within the realm of special education than the federal government does as well, right? So we hold ourselves to a higher standard within special education programming as well.
So my point is just relative to how we account for the funding. So if we're moving the cost into our operating expenditures, is there a way that we are accounting or a report that is made to the state or the feds that says, we made a contribution from our operating budget? We're taking money away from our other children in order to support this unfunded mandate?
Well, the state requires, it's called a maintenance of effort report, and one of my favorite things, I get to do it this week. And we have to increase the state, our spending each year. So this will, this again, will go into the operating. And when I do that report, it will show what I spend on the operating for special education.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have one last slide for you before we turn it over to all. We also know that there's going to be some other additional positions. I'll start at the bottom. We have asterisks by student support coaches and our technology support specialists. These are also positions we currently have. People are in them. All would like to return. They're currently paid out of ESER funding. If you have any questions about our technology support specialist, Greg would be very adept to answer about her. Susan could address anything with student support coaches. But from a broad, broadly speaking, we see great value in what these individuals bring to our buildings. And in particular, our student support coaches are qualified, I mean, they're also mental health professionals as well. And we know pretty much everybody up through, including the governor, has a pretty heavy focus on mental health. Orange County High School needs, they need help in the administrative support realm, particularly for the assistant principals. So we really see value in seeking a position to help the assistant principals manage their job. When you looked back at some of the numbers, it's pretty clear to us that at Lucas Grove Elementary School, in order to maintain class ratios that are acceptable, that we're going to have to add a third grade position. If you think back to the numbers that Yvonne presented on the pupil teacher ratio, Unionville had a pretty, pretty large kindergarten class. All those kindergartners are going to first grade next year. And the incoming kindergarten class is not smaller than the kindergarten class leaving. So anywhere where we can say, hey, you're doing, you're going from kindergarten to first grade where we don't have to add a position, we are plugging and playing to do those. Fortunately, at Unionville, I mean, there's, the kids are coming and we want them to come to school and the numbers are there, but that's certainly going to require a first grade teacher. We talked about Lucas Grove and Prospect Heights. I brought that up for a specific reason. You could see that, you know, adding a position in each of those core areas essentially going to level those two schools out as far as classroom pupil to teacher ratio. We feel that's really important. And a significant priority of mine, we are operating Prospect Heights with 450-some students with a principal and an AP, and that's busy and it's a lot we're managing. Right now, we're managing Lucas Grove Middle School with just shy of 700 with a principal and an AP. That's not a long-term strategy for success. I do not believe it needs to be a 12-month position. Whenever we addressed the primary, second primary and elementary campus in last budget, we made it an 11-month position to realize some savings. But Mr. Sedano and Ms. Rombach in that building, they needed administrative staffing that's commiserate with the number of students that are in the building, right? And so you look at a building, you know, principal and an AP is 100% appropriate for 450. Principal and an AP is, we are killing Nick and Marlene with 700 students. And that's just the bottom line of where we stand, so.
Just going to add one thing. We're all paying attention up here, even though three of us are brand new. Two plus two is four. I mean, we get it. So appreciate your hard work, you know, down there, especially at the Lucas Grove Schools. The ratios are high, 24 to 1 in the kindergarten class. Wow. So, Mr. Sedano, thank you.
And so that is what we have for you, to give a, kind of a 35,000-foot overview of the priorities. And now, again, the work is to begin, continue to work, and we'll continue to engage our board budget representatives. Per the calendar, our target is to bring a proposed budget to you February the 26th. And like I said, our hope is that we have a clear picture of the state revenue stream. It will still be guessing, but hopefully it'll be a little bit better guessing as we move forward. And so that is our plan, to present as much information for our community and for the board as possible. And with that, that is all that we have this evening for reports and recommendations. And Madam Chair, I humbly turn it back over to you if there are no more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Horne.
Thank you.
We're going to have a recess for five minutes, so.
Good call.
You can, sure.
Five-minute recess. Thank you.
Good call. That's a great call. Thank you.
First on the list, we have the facility usage MOU with the county. Mr. Rickett?
Yeah, so just a little backstory on this particular one. Prior to COVID, constituents, citizens of the county, they were able to access and get into the field house and utilize the track and tennis and some other things. And COVID happened. And, thank you. COVID happened. And so since that time, they have not been able to access it. So what this does is creates an agreement with the county where Parks and Rec will look at utilizing the facility from 5:00 AM to 6:30 AM. They will need to be out by 6:30. That's, I think, Dr. Horne, it gives us about 15 minutes of grace period before our kids start coming.
Correct, and staff.
And staff.
That's right. Because they, they're expected to be on site by 7 o'clock, our staff members, correct? Yes, sir.
Yep. So, you know, opens it, you know, back up in a good collaboration with the county and our community as well. Any questions?
I just wanted to be transparent and say that I did have some questions earlier. I spoke to Mr. Rickett, and he explained to me about the Parks and Recreation aspect of this, because I was wondering about mutual indemnification, liability, about whose responsibility it was for background and that type of thing. But I do have that clarification now, and I wanted to thank you for that. And I wanted to make sure that everyone else was aware of that also.
Thank you. And it would fall under county insurance. And we have had conversations with Mr. Voorhees, the county administrator, and Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to clarify, under Article III, Terms of Use Number One, where it says OCPS will provide access to county staff or volunteers to OCPS facilities. So what we're saying is those people are any citizen of Orange County.
Yes, ma'am. Citizen of Orange County.
Okay. That reads a little confusing to me. It almost sounds like you have to be.
Dr. Horne?
I think what this is getting at is, this is getting more to the idea that we as, my recommendation as a school division is we do not try to operate a Parks and Rec group. We should let Parks and Rec do this. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, Marshall, but I believe here, when we talk about providing access, this means for basically your site supervisor. And so if we know, so there would be potentially a volunteer, or potentially it's somebody that's paid staff of Parks and Rec that could serve and be the site supervisor for when a group wants to come in from 5:00 to 6:30 and walk the track in the sports center. And so why we like that is it prevents us from having to try to find folks who are willing to do it and try to pay folks or amend work schedules in order to get those. So we, our job is to make sure that we're open with communication to Parks and Rec about when, not just the field house, but various facilities are available for use. And then we trust them to be the person on point as the site supervisor, for them to report issues to us, clean up after themselves, et cetera, because this is a known reputable group that, quite frankly, we're doing some of this work with already at other sites in the county. So this means, this is more as far as who is going to supervise a site and who's going to be on scene should anything come up. Who's the point of contact? Of course, if you're going to have, if it's going to be a Parks and Rec activity, folks in the community are going to sign up via Parks and Rec and let them know, yes, hey, I'm going to be a participant in pickleball or volleyball or walking or whatever it is. So this article is really dealing with the nuts and bolts of providing them the ability to be the site supervisor. They're vetted by Parks and Rec. We work with them to provide them the access. That really takes the operational side where we don't have to be, and we shouldn't be, quite frankly, the Parks and Rec group in Orange County, that there's staff to do Parks and Rec. We are providing the facility and making sure that we're coordinating to provide those folks access that they bring to us vetted, if that makes sense.
Can you give me a?
Thank you, that's helpful.
Example of what group may go in there under our?
Yeah, so the one right now that we want to work with that is most pressing or most on the forefront is a group of citizens who would like to go in the morning. And in the sports center, there's a, there's a rubber tract, it's indoor tract that goes around the courts, right? Your basketball courts, et cetera. And we would like to provide them that access, but we are also being mindful of, you know, we don't have the staff to staff it, and we don't believe that that should necessarily fall on the school division insurance if somebody falls walking up in icy steps or whatever it might be. We believe that it should be a Parks and Rec activity that they organize, just like any other activity that they might want to do even for adults or for students or children. They operate, we provide the space in order to facilitate, because we want the public to be able to come in. And there's no reason not to have it available when we're not using it for school-sponsored activities, so.
That connected the dots for me. There was a missing piece, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
I agree, that explains it perfectly.
Perfect.
Dr. Horne?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Actually, I have two questions. The first being, I understand that the staff or volunteer would be vetted and background tracked, but the persons that are going to be on site, the are going to be on site, the citizens that want to use the facilities, are they also going to be background checked? Because how does that work? I know we're a school, we have children, so that would be a concern. Just we don't know who would be coming in and out. Whereas if it was like a basketball game or something like that, we we have officers there. So that would be one of my concerns. But it also sounds like they are also going to be providing us access to other county buildings. So would that include the public safety building?
If we if we asked, yes, Ms. Quinter. Just like also Booster Park, if we chose to use that, we would request access. Back to Ms. Dawson's comment, Article One, not only is works for the county, but also us as well, works both ways. Did that answer your question, Ms. Quinter?
Yes.
As far as the first part, most of the activities that we're talking about are going to be outside of school hours. Anything that we do that we would do within school hours, we would be vetting all of our visitors through the Raptor system as they were coming in. And so that's why we're we're pretty judicious about the the hours that, you know, are available, you know, and before students get there. So I don't I don't know specifically how how Parks and Rec or if they background check participants in the activity, so to speak. But I know from our perspective, it's a little bit different, because it's outside of the school hours, and we have folks checking, like you said, like a basketball game, you know, that's essentially open, and so we're not checking.
That's already happening. So Parks and Rec is using our schools down at the Locust Grove when they run basketball programs and so forth. So it's out. One of the reasons for the MOU is it doesn't fall within the school parameters. It falls, it is our building that we are giving access to to the county. So, you know, that that already exists today moving forward.
That's correct, Mr. Rickett.
I'm sorry. Let me interrupt. So my question is more of a, how do we see this playing playing out? Is Parks and Recs going to have something on their website where these these people can go in and sign up? Do we know any of that information yet, or is that still with the...
I do not know, Ms. Anderson. Great question. I would think that they would publicize this, just like they do their volleyball, their pickleball, any of their other activities that they already have approved facility use requests in all their other buildings. This would be no different, the walking in the field house.
Gotcha. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And that's exactly actually Dr. Hornick's point. Because if we're doing it, then do we advertise? Do we say this? Do we say that? Now it's off.
Correct. We're already doing this just with other facilities.
We want to be able to direct folks to say, you know, contact Parks and Rec. And our job is to, you know, provide the facility when it's available, when schools are not using them.
And Madam Chair, one last piece, if I could just, Dr. Hornick, on on page three, if we could just correct some names?
Yes, right. Yes, this is the this is how it was written originally when we brought it forward December the 4th. And so we would, of course, be amending all of these pages to reflect the current makeup of the board. We just, we wanted to bring forward, as in particular, two, two of the members have seen it previous without making changes. And then if you all agree to take action, it would be under the understanding that those changes would be made, so it can be signed by the requisite personnel.
I wouldn't have a... I would just, sorry, Madam Chair, I would just ask that maybe we could invoke some kind of regulation that one of our staff members would be going through the the facility, just making sure that nobody stayed behind or, you know, have some kind of inspection regulation in place.
Yeah, we do. We are doing anytime we have a building rental, I mean, our folks are going back through to make sure that there weren't damages and other things, or folks are left behind. So 100% we would do that to make sure that our buildings are clear and safe and ready for students, you know, the next day or that morning or whatever it would be.
That's correct, Dr. Hornick. Our goal is always to have the building ready for the next day of instruction.
Thank you very much.
So with this being proposed before, if there are no other questions or concerns, would would someone like to have a motion to approve this and get it sent out to the Board of Supervisors?
With those...
Madam Chair, could we make, could we have those edits in place before the motion that were discussed, just so that way the document itself can go through?
Yep, absolutely. That's fine. So...
We'll put it on for next time, right?
We can add it to the February 5 meeting with the adjustments made.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll we'll adjust the names, and we'll just bring it back next week and add it to the the action items that would be with the calendar and whatever else we talked about tonight.
That would be fourth thing.
It's a long time ago. Yeah, the the outdoor classroom and modular restroom.
Marshall, thanks for this. Hopefully this just gets it off your plate, and it's done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Rickett?
So next on the agenda, so Ms. Quinter had proposed submitting a letter to the Board of Supervisors. I took on that role of writing the letter that we will be presenting to the Board of Supervisors. What I'd like to propose with that letter is that I would present that at a Board of Supervisors meeting on February 13. That way, that would give them time to prepare, to ask questions regarding it, whatever it may be, but actually doing in a public forum. Was there any questions or concerns about the actual letter itself, any changes that you would like to see made, so forth?
I have a couple further questions relative to this. My first thought this is, I'm not quite sure if this was something that had been a conversation before this board has been seated. I don't think it was. But when you're saying expanding our relationship and combining resources, and and part of it is for safer, more efficient location, definitely you've got some public safety issues identified. I was not aware of the existing or prior safety issues here, so I I'm glad that we're getting that brought out also. I know that we as a board have board representatives that I believe you and Jack are working with the county already on the CTE and CIP stuff. So I'm just not sure if this is truly too preliminary to do this. I feel that we have other more pertinent things that are specific to our educational program that we maybe need to focus on rather than this. But specifically, I guess the the questions that I would have, and we talked a little about it, is safer, more efficient board working environment. So number one, with the safety issues and the lighting that you mentioned in here, I wanted to make sure that Dr. Hornick could address that with staff, regardless of where we go with this this letter to the board, if that's an issue for lighting. And I know that sometimes when we leave here, it's kind of dark out there. So that's kind of a side note. Efficiency, I'm not sure. I guess I guess there will be some impact to the staff. I don't believe, I think Melissa, you told me that we haven't really spoken at length with the superintendent to that to that. But again, we are electronic, so we have the capacity to basically take files with us. Really shouldn't impact us as far as not being able to have a conversation. So I think that that was, you know, an area that I was a little concerned about, but I understand that that should not be a big thing. The accessibility, I do have some questions about. It was brought to my attention by some member of the public, and I can't remember who mentioned it to me, that there may be some ingress egress issues going into the public safety building location, driving in there. I don't, I've only been there once, so I don't know if that's a true statement or not. But I was just thinking, are these things that we might want to direct staff to maybe get a little bit more information prior to going to the board and requesting that? And then I think to myself, is that really the best usage of staff's time? So I just kind of talking this through my head out loud to make sure that people understand that we're looking at this pretty closely and trying to make sure, again, we are making decisions and using our time in a manner that truly supports a better educational environment. That's just about it. I just wanted to make those statements. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or things that they would like to address about the letter?
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Dr. Hornick, do you have any issue one way or the other? You don't have to go into anything right now if you don't feel. But if it would pose a hardship on you or your staff, I would be interested to to hear about that.
So that I am not particularly concerned if we if we absolutely need to inconvenience folks, we do it. I think the answer to your question, Ms. Quinter, it really, it is really meeting by meeting, night by night. Ms. Anderson and Mr. Rickett, some of the folks who came this evening knew with the things we if we if I was trying to do everything I was getting done up until the last minute of this and trying to drive to any location other here, it would have been quite a quite a task this evening. That would have been a monumental inconvenience. On another night, it could mean nothing, right? And so I think as far as entering and exiting, I would be happy I can, regardless of what's done into the future, just some of the things, I think I can find some ways to address that with you all to provide you a different way in and out, a different place to park and other things, should that pose an issue 100%. I personally, this is me personally, I like school business being done on on school property. I like I like Mr. Hill being able to address, like we had the the technology issues this evening. If we go to a place that's not school property, and we are kind of squatting and using somebody else's technology, I wonder how many times we we have to send his him or his people back and forth during the day to make sure it works, how seamless the transition would be, like like tonight, when we were able to quickly get a TV, work through the back back channels to get the presentation up. Those are the things that that I see. I know what I do remember 100%, and I know this topic was brought up previous to this board being set. So it was it was it was addressed and brought forward as a thought. Another thought that we that was brought forward, and at the time, my answer was, it really depends on technology. But there was some discussion about the the feasibility and and the benefit of actually doing what it sounds like this board had done years ago, and to kind of take our show on the road and go to different buildings, different schools throughout the county, and do, you know, like, for instance, you know, this meeting and next Monday's meeting, we're at Locust Grove Middle. And then February 26, and March, whatever that next Monday is, are at Gordon Barber. And then, you know, April timeframe comes, and it's here, or it's at the high school, or whatever. You know, I've already had some discussions with Mr. Hill about, you know, what that would mean for the stream. I never want to, I think the streaming is important, probably less for the streaming and maybe more for the recording. Mr. Hill provided me some statistics over the last, how far back did that go, Greg? A year or so? And I think we average about 20 viewers on a live stream, right? So if if we decide we might want to go out and about, you know, how much we decide we we need to stream, does that look in the public sphere as we're trying to be less transparent? You know, I certainly don't want to lose the transparency game, right, so to speak, and we want to maintain that. So but I just think that and we can have these conversations well, but just I appreciate you asking. Those are some things that just that stick out. Folks are here for quite a long time. Like I said, a night like tonight, that would have been a massive nightmare, trying to get over to the public safety, just from the nature of the things that we have we had going on and last minute changes and things that were unforeseen. Other nights, it's not. So it's, that's really a toss up. I do, I do, I do just like using our stuff. I like it being our technology. I like it being our people. And so those are just a few thoughts that I had about meeting location in general. I know when you when you all get and you start talking a little bit about board member town halls, obviously, those are going to be out and about. Those aren't, those aren't going to be located to one building. So, you know, that could help defray and help us get out a little bit and engage with folks, which I think is a wonderful idea. But just, I guess, at an overview level, those are just some of the thoughts that I have about a move at this point, so.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I like what the superintendent said as far as, and I think that we have mentioned it, I know Darlene and I spoke to it just a little bit today regarding the town halls. I know you spoke at one of our last meeting, I believe, regarding the maybe rotational type meetings at different locations that they used to do. So it just occurred to me, as we're talking this through, that maybe that would be the best way to start it, is to do our rotational meetings, to be able to bring community members in, parents in that are closer to that school they actually go to, get their input, their priorities, their thoughts. It could help us with the legislative advocacy stuff that we're talking about. And it could also help us with determining if this is something that would be palatable and interesting to our communities and to our parents. Because if we're only getting 20 people that are watching us on video, the location's not going to be that big of a deal. There's only three miles between here and the public safety, at least the turnoff to go up there. So again, I'm not against the idea. I'm just wondering if it's really something we should do right at this moment, or if we should explore and get a little bit more input on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It sounds like this is the start of a conversation. So I would suggest maybe we we can present this letter to the board anyways, so there is the option, if we decide it's a good good fit for us. But if it's not, we don't have to make that move. That's that's not a decision for tonight. So I would just like to suggest maybe that option.
Yeah, I mean, I personally think that ultimately, the letter was to, you know, initiate the conversation. And it was to find out if it was if it was possible, number one. But ultimately, the letter was not necessarily putting us in a position where we were definitely moving locations and that we were going to be there. Because, again, I mean, I've talked to, you know, old board members, you know, previous to, you know, coming on, and, you know, they talked about being at other buildings before COVID, and that we were, you know, we were in the public eye more. And I remember there was one that I actually attended that was at the high school. So so I definitely think this is not necessarily something that we're we're committing, we're not committing to just using the public safety building, but as an option, that we have that ability to use it. So that's really kind of, I think, what the purpose of the letter was.
So based on that, I'm thinking that this would definitely be okay to go forward with. But maybe that last thing here, where we say we ask for your approval to use the public safety building, we just say we would like to have administration work with you relative to how we may accomplish that, something to that effect.
Okay. Yep, we could definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I will amend the letter, and then we can bring it back to the table for a vote to forward. Does that sound like an agreement for everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Harrington, Board Decision Norms and Matrix for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I've presented and provided a information to kind of tell you what I've been thinking and let the the community also know what I'm thinking. Basically, I was Basically, I was thinking of this as something that I myself would use. And then as we started talking about things, I thought, well, this may be a good guiding principle, not necessarily something that's into policy or that formal, but something that we can kind of check base with ourselves individually, something we can check base with our board members, our team of board members, and just make sure that we are, again, focusing on the thing that we're supposed to be here supporting most, and that is student achievement, instructional and educational opportunities. So I just thought I would throw this out here, get some input, see if this is something that we are interested in using as a board, giving us an opportunity to have feedback and talk towards these areas, if you have other ideas, or if it's just me that is interested in something like this.
If I may?
Yes.
In reading this, I really like how it focuses our attention where our attention needs to be, and that is, of course, with student achievement. However, my question about it arises from FOIA law. If we're to do this as a board ahead of an actual meeting, it would have to be public because of FOIA. So it seems to me that this might be a great guideline for each of us individually to use as we're thinking about board agenda items, or that we can talk about, you know, one-on-one, which doesn't meet the FOIA requirement or the public meeting requirement. And I do thank you for bringing it forward. It has a lot of good thoughts in it about how to really consciously process what it is we're bringing into the public domain. But I'm not sure we can make it an actual policy or procedure for the board. That's my thought.
And I agree to that. I mean, again, I'm just, these are the guiding lights. These are where we check in with ourselves. If we wanted to have this, again, not in policy, but potentially have it something that we use in an open board meeting format, then it would be something that possibly in this type of a format, where we're talking about those informational things, those discussion things, we ask ourselves these questions, we can justify or determine whether or not it really aligns with where we're at right now. But again, I'm not asking for policy at this point. I think this is something that we could work together to refine over our terms. I think that is something that can be added to or taken away from depending on the situation that we're analyzing. So that's my thoughts.
Anyone else? Sorry, I took my mic away. Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with Sandy and Darlene. I feel like it brings light to how we do make decisions leading up to meetings, so I think that's good for the community to understand. But at the same time, I do worry with just making sure that we're still being transparent, like we don't want to present something to the board prior to, you know, I would prefer to have the presentation to the board and the community at large. But I do think that this is a good internal tool to ensure that we're staying on track, on target with our goals.
You're good?
Noah, thank you very much. I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it forward. Next, we have Ms. Dawson, the Piedmont Regional Education Program update.
All right, so we had our joint board meeting this past Wednesday on January 24th of the PREP Board, and Mrs. Ayler graciously drove she and I to the Albemarle offices to meet with, and this was all new to me, so I didn't even know what PREP was, so I had a great chance to pick her brain as we were driving down the road. Thank you, Mrs. Ayler. It was a dreary day outside, but it was a sunny day inside that car. I appreciated your insights. So there are nine school districts, just in case you didn't know, like I didn't know, what is this thing, PREP? Nine school districts that are part of the program, and it provides specialized services to students who are identified with disabilities. So that would be us, Albemarle, Charlottesville City, Culpeper, Fluvana, Green, Louisa, Madison, and Nelson. And there is a day school option there called Ivy Creek, and the bulk of our discussion at this meeting this past Wednesday revolved around the fact that school is located in Albemarle County, and they have decided to withdraw from PREP, and they're taking their building with them. So we have leased it annually for 20 years-ish, a long time. So this sort of came as a surprise, and so we're sort of thrown into a bit of a tizzy trying to figure out where are we going to go and how can we pay for wherever this is that we're going to go. So Albemarle has requested that this building, called Ivy Creek, be vacated by June of 2025. So the current pressing need is the search for a new place to house the day school, and a lot of that discussion was in closed session because negotiations are still in progress, and so it had to be private. So I can't report on that, but it's a work in progress, and the best-case scenario that they're hoping for is to have a new place leased for the start of this coming fall year, if they can find a building suitable at a suitable price. And that, of course, is the rub, because it's going to end up being far more expensive, most likely, than what we currently have been paying. So here in Orange, the way that it will impact up us, Mrs. Ayler is going to be working with the PREP Director to help determine how many slots or how many students we will be able to commit to PREP, and all of those nine participating divisions, it'll be eight after Albemarle leaves us, need to finalize a commitment to a specific number of slots and sign this revised agreement prepared by the attorney, and that has to be approved prior to the budget approval, because the determination of the slots gives us the tuition rate. So the fewer slots, the higher the tuition's going to be. So we currently do not have students from Orange who are enrolled in the day school, but we do have PREP staff who come here to provide assistive technology for our identified students. So our financial commitment currently is much less than many of these other divisions that have day school slots. But it's looking to, preliminarily, it looks like it's going to increase significantly. So that's going to be another budget issue that we'll have to talk about. So that's where we stand. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ayler.
Yes.
Can you drive again next time?
I want to ride if it's sunny in your car.
All right, on to E. Ms. Quintern, do you have anything to report on Head Start?
Yes, so the meeting was held on January 22nd. I was not present, there was a meeting time change for the holiday, but Ms. Ayler was gracious to send me the minutes. So starting February 5th, we will be accepting applications for next year. We always appreciate helping to get the word out. We've been not meeting our goals as far as enrollment the last couple of years, which actually has put us in a tight spot. We're currently in an under-enrollment plan. We're going to continue to work on our change in scope plan to reduce our numbers by 11 without losing funding. December 11th, met with the training and technical assistants, they helped, they've accepted their offer in two areas, which is a class concept development, behavioral challenges in the classroom. A meeting will occur soon to discuss the personal development for staff. Head Start, the EPI in Gordonsville, will be moving into Gordon Barber in late May or early June. The modular unit will no longer be needed as we have filed for disposition submitted to OHS. And once released from the federal government, this property will be repurposed and finalized by the Orange County School Board. There's a parent meeting in January, the packets are going to be sent out to families with information to support their children at home. Conscious Discipline Meeting on-site for families will be next week, well, actually, sorry, tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The Health Advisory Committee will meet in March with parents' information being at the forefront. Good news is that federal poverty guidelines have increased slightly, which would allow for a higher income for families to be able to participate in the program. But further discussion regarding the difference between the poverty guidelines and household incomes continue to be brought up. So our next meeting is in February, the 26th at 3:15. And that completes my report out.
Thank you, Ms. Next on the agenda, F, we have Legislative Committee update from Ms. Harrington and Ms. Quintern.
Yes, so we have met a couple of times over the phone, just putting our thoughts together, and we welcome feedback from the rest of the board. We realize that we're just the representatives for the board in its entirety. But just some notes, I took down the goals for VSBA and would like to compare those with our goals eventually. I did reach out to our legislators. I've gotten confirmation from Phil Scott, Bryce Reeves, and Nick Freitas to participate in quarterly meetings, however they are in legislation right now. So I'm aiming for April, but I will get back with the board once we have confirmation from them when availability starts opening up. I also reached out to Abigail Stemberger, Tim Kane, and Mark Warner. Mark Warner sent an email last week, or his staff did, asking for a little bit more information or clarification on, you know, what our goals are and desires are. So I wanted to bring that before you guys for discussion, and you can send me your ideas in an email or whatever, and I can compile that and get back to him. So that way, hopefully, we can have some thorough representation as well. I also would like to extend an invitation to the two members of the Orange County Board of Supervisors, and I also extended an invitation to Dr. Horneck and his cabinet, and have asked for different things that, you know, have been difficulties, so either red tape things or legislation difficulties that kind of hold Orange County back from being as successful as we would like to be. So Sandy and I continued with, you know, jotting down some goals, so mine would be to meet quarterly as a committee to discuss needs and challenges at Orange County Public Schools. I think it's pretty generic, but the details are going to be in the discussions as we move forward. I think a virtual format would be better accepted. There's a lot of moving pieces and people, and so I think that if we were to have a virtual format, we would be able to have more participation. We would have an agenda that the board would come up with, and we can run that agenda through the committee. Hopefully, you know, next year and years to come, invite other local school boards to participate, so that way we have more of a collaboration. And then also looking towards funding, what we could do with the funds from the VSBA, should we choose to not continue with their services, how could we better use those funds, possibly staff appreciation? We didn't get too much into that, but just an idea to throw out there. I reached out to the board members, as well as heard from some citizens, and some issues that seem to be priority right now is transparency, opt-outs, data protection, and then backlog of clearance for tutors through Yonkin's Learning Recovery Initiatives. And today, Sandy and I spoke about what type of committee we are looking towards, and I would welcome your all's feedback as well about this. Would it be more of an ad hoc or a standing committee? Ad hoc would be, I think, not quite appropriate as it's, you know, it's specific on one topic, one problem that we'd be working through, whereas a standing committee would just be developing over time. With a standing committee, we would also have minutes that we would be taking, and I think that would help us to hold our legislators accountable for conversations that we have in addition to just talking what we're discussing. And also, I would like to develop a calendar for our legal requirements, so that way we have that. And I know Laura, you're really good about that already, but so that way, that's something we could pass down to board members. For example, the Statement of Economic Impact, COI, FOIA, et cetera. So another thing that we were talking about earlier tonight were the positions in the funding discussion with Esser. That's really why I feel this committee is important. We can focus on our needs, we can discuss what our difficulties are, where the hangups might be in legislation that our representatives might not know because they're not in the day-to-day. And so those things can be relayed and shared, and they can be representatives on our behalf as they know Orange County, they know Dr. Horneck, they know what we need. So with that, I don't know if I missed anything, Sandy, if you would like to chime in, and then other board members, if you have any comments.
Thank you, Chelsea. I appreciate that. That was a really good representation of what we've been talking about, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this. As I've mentioned also, I kind of see it as twofold, two areas of focus. One would be where we're, as you said, working with staff, we're looking at those minor things, those red tape things that we can maybe reach out and touch base with a legislator, touch base with someone who can tweak it or point us in the right direction, but not a full legislative advocacy position or anything at that point. So for example, as you said, the transparency, the backlog, I believe we talked about fingerprinting before, those are things that we wouldn't have to pursue legislative policy or advocacy with, but definitely something that this committee could look at and focus time on and provide feedback to the full board to make sure that we are not, again, stepping outside of our role as board members, not getting into the micromanaging of a school district, but are being a positive support and a resource to help them get through some of these things so they can keep focusing on doing what is in the best interest of our students' education, excuse me. The second part that I see is the committee that you just had described relative to getting people that are within the county that we work with, that are aligned with us, such as the County Board of Supervisor representative, to identify those things that are of common interest, to see if we have any overlapping responsibilities, overlapping areas that we either want to continue to support or that we feel is better left to the other agency, per se. I think that it's really important that as we go forward and we work and we try to develop this committee, that we recognize and make sure that we are working at the direction of the whole board, because we, as a whole board, are really the only ones that have that legal authority to enter into anything. So I would not want to have myself or Ms. Quintern as a delegate that is able to make a decision without coming back to the full board and having that conversation and making sure, again, that the direction that we're going in is either going to be supplanting what currently exists, such as something that may be being advocated by Virginia School Board Association or another organization that is working with us on legislative advocacy type of positions and outside of that specific agency, and that we aren't wasting time. I think there's a lot of duplication, but again, if we can get out there and we can get this support and we can have these meetings and we can identify, oh, this is really important, but it's not as important to you and you, but it really is important to us for our children, for the district's children, the division's children, would you support us at least if we take this forward? And then we have the opportunity to meet with those individual legislatures if they're going to be in our committee, or we can go meet with them outside of the committee. I think this whole next year gives us a really great opportunity to do it slow so we can do it well. We're kind of a little bit behind on current budget stuff that is being presented at the state level, but it definitely is an interesting aspect and an interesting conversation to make sure that we can stand up for Orange County students and may go a step above and beyond what currently exists out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we'll go on to G. All right, then we'll go on to G.
Um, Ms. Anderson, I did have an email, um, that I did want to get back to, uh, Senator Warner's team. They asked if we could further clarify the purpose of the Legislative Committee and how Senator Warner would be involved. Um, and I think that would be something that we should, uh, get back to them sooner rather than later, so it takes time to get the ball rolling.
Ms. Quintern, if you don't mind, could you share the email with the four of us? Then we can respond directly back to you, and then you can compile the, all, all the information right there. Is that, is that okay?
That works if that's, if that's good with you guys.
Yep, that works with me. Yep, all right, thank you.
Before we go to the next item, um, just one more thing I wanted to, just, saw my notes. Ms. Quintern mentioned about this is something that we were going to be also doing to look at whether or not we maintain our current relationship with VSBA, or if we align with the different types of organizations. I think that that's a little bit separate than the Legislative Committee that we're talking about and the advocacy. I think that we had mentioned at our last meeting that we were going to develop information to bring back and present to the board relative just to that specifically, but that's not really part of the legislative advocacy positions that we are currently.
I would, I would, I would agree with that, but my understanding is the Legislative Committee was to replace the VSBA. So the lobbying part of the VSBA would be taken care of by the Legislative Committee.
And, and my understanding, we were going to, um, identify and provide comparatives looking at all those different options that are out there before we made that decision.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dawson.
All right, this is going to be very short and sweet tonight, um, because it's nine o'clock. It's after nine o'clock. Y'all ready to go home, aren't you? Um, so Town Hall meetings, this is something that came up over and over again, uh, in this last year of campaigning, is that, um, and, and I, I've said it personally, when our community comes here for public comment and they stand at, at the podium and they speak to us, and we're here and we listen and we hear them, but they never get any sort of response. They never get an answer unless they email one of, you know, a board member directly or... So our idea, my idea, and several others have mentioned it, is, is some way for us to get out into our community more. So the only thing I'm asking for tonight is that we think about what the best way is to do that. We've talked about PTA or PTO meetings at the schools, um, we've talked about more individual things where we could show up at the library meeting room and say, "We'll be there for three hours, pop in if you want to talk to me." Um, so what I would like us, a, a, and this is just kind of brainstorming, I'd like us to get some community feedback. Number one, do you really want to do that? Do I want to show up if nobody's going to come? Or, I mean, do you really want to come and talk to the board members? Do you have issues you would, you would prefer not to address in this public forum, but that you would like to talk to us about individually, that we could then address with your privacy kept, you know, intact? Or would you rather have an individual type thing? Uh, so I don't really know where I'm going with that yet, but that's kind of my thought process. So what I'd like to ask for anybody who's listening, community people, and maybe we can put this out, I don't know, as a survey or as a, just talk to us kind of thing, could you tell us, how would you prefer that we do that? Do, number one, do you want us to do that? Number two, how, how's the best way to do that? To make us accessible to you and not just here listening to you, but never giving you, never giving any give and take? I hope that makes some sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Real quick, I love the idea, absolutely. Um, and I would just suggest quickly, um, I think that group right over there is who to ask. Direct connection with the parents. So, um, you know, if we could get some feedback, um, from the principals at the nine schools and, and here, okay, what are you guys hearing? Do the parents want us to come? One of us to come, all five of us to come, two of us to come? And let us know. And if you're hearing that, we're going to show up.
I really think, if I may, it, it'll depend on how formal or informal you want to make it. Um, there are certain divisions that, that pick each kind of magisterial or, or voting districts, and we have five, and, I mean, they're, they're on a calendar, and, you know, District One is in February, and then District Two's in March, and Three's in whatever, and, and, you know, the, the board shows up and, um, you know, to, to the extent that the cabinet is needed, we can be there. Um, all five show up, of course, and we're talking about school business, you know, that's why we have to establish those dates and have Laura post those as a meeting, right? So we have to make sure we meet, we, we meet our requirement for, um, the posting of meeting. Um, you know, and I've seen them where, you know, the, I could, you know, provide, there could be a short presentation, um, and it could be more scripted, um, you know, just depending on, you know, the, the nature. Um, we probably have to look at parameters be established beforehand because, you know, as you all know, there'll be some, there will be some things that we won't be able to address, i.e. personnel, you know, in particular. Um, and then, you know, set some parameters as far as what, um, you know, decorum and, you know, the types of things, because we would, we would like it to be effective and poignant and on, and, and targeted, not necessarily devolve into, um, places we don't want it to go. Then again, if it's something where you want to do as an individual board member, like coffee and conversation at, I don't know, Guacamole Restaurant, I, I guess that wouldn't be coffee, but, um, you know, that, that's, that's a little bit less formal and, you know, doesn't necessarily require, I mean, that, you could just, so I, I, I really think just, and, and we can help you frame it, and, um, I can give you, I could give you some examples. It could, it could be, um, it, it could be two going. So I, I, I think, as, as you guys wrap your heads around it, and we can certainly be a resource to help you frame it, I'd never think there's, I always think it's a good idea to, the more public outreach and the more give and take and communication between, uh, the board and the school division, the community, the better. There never a downside to that, so, yeah, just, like I said, my, my two senses, you decide how, how kind of formal you want to structure it. Um, we can certainly assist you all, we can assist you with the, with posting and information, so...
Okay, my thought so far was perhaps a combination of those things, some very informal times and then some more formal times. Uh, I've been to several trainings in the last month where I had presentations of jaw-dropping information that I really think our parents would, would appreciate knowing. Things about anti-trafficking that we could perhaps partner with law enforcement to present. Things about the effects of digital media on the brains of our children and ourselves. Just, you know, informational type things that aren't necessarily just school, um, school board things, but parenting things and community things. So it's, it's just a seed of an idea, and I'm, you know, I'm rambling, but I, I think there's some value in it if we can figure out how to, how to pursue it.
And we'll, we'll be happy to help you structure it and make it effective and communicate dates, et cetera, and I think it's a great idea.
Well, Darlene, I, I would, um, agree with you. I think that's a great idea. I think maybe starting off informally, um, I don't know that Vanessa would want to tax the school personnel, um, with another meeting. I think personally, I would prefer it to be more informal, but we also need to keep in mind, um, as a board that we can't necessarily, um, we're representing the board, but we can't represent the board's voice. Um, so, you know, whatever we are discussing, it's, it's going to be what I, Chelsea Quintern, board member thinks, not what Orange County School Board feels as well. Um, so just another caution point, idea to, to bring up.
Thank you all. Ah, moving on, number six, we're almost there. Review board calendars, Ms. Byron, please.
Miss Five.
I'm sorry?
Number Five.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed number five, sorry. I did, see? It's too late. Uh, board member comments, is there any additional information from the board members?
I think we've all commented enough tonight.
Good comment.
I'm sorry, I have a couple comments. Just, I'll, I'll be fast, I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted to report out that I was able to attend the VSBA conference last week. Got some good information on several areas, legislative advocacy, board governance, superintendent board relationship and how we work as a team. They had a great presentation about budget and all the steps in budget, so I will make sure and get you guys a copy of that if you'd like to see it. As Darlene said on the Town Hall conversation right there, there was some crazy things that she and I talked about earlier today. So one of the presentations that we saw at VSBA was regarding the dangers of vaping, and I was just absolutely horrified, um, after seeing that, and Darlene had mentioned that, um, the other thing was, I think, AI and social media. So again, those things that really are out there and potentially really impacting in a negative manner our students' education. So I, I would agree that at one point, we maybe need to talk a little bit more about how we can bring some of that information in. You guys probably know it, but we need the parents to know it, we need our community to know.
That presentation with, um...
Yes.
With, with Dr. Peace from VCU talking about vaping, I think great for to coordinate with the sheriff's office and get, and have her come here or get on. I mean, that, that was one, similar to the things you're talking about with trafficking. I mean, it was, it was about the history and the dangers and, and what's going on and the unregulated market. It was, um, even for somebody who knows that it's terrible.
It was...
It was jaw-dropping.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you. In addition to that, I just wanted to thank Melissa and Laura, um, Dr. Hornick, I appreciate you guys as working on the changes to the agenda. I think it flows quite a bit better, um, again, working on transparency, communication, making sure that we are not just keeping the information to ourselves, but that, um, we're sharing that information with the public in case you have questions or concerns. I would like to thank Chelsea for working with me on this Legislative Committee. Um, I think we're off to a good start there. And Darlene, our conversation today was great. And Melissa, thank you for, um, leading us and taking on the obligation of chair, so I just wanted to reach that out there. And finally, for Jack, I believe at the VSBA, um, conference that we went to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hornick, they did talk about state budget is looking a little bit at IDEA funding, so they are, at least at the state level, looking at maybe some type of, um, additional funding for our IDEA program, our, our special education students. And I thought that that was great, we'll take anything that we can get. So, um, I believe that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I'm going to move on to six. Ms. Byron.
Okay. All right, so we've got our February calendar up, we've got the Gifted Parent Advisory coming up this week on Thursday evening. We've got our meeting on the fifth, the Governor's School first meeting, um, not first meeting, but their meeting is on...
First meeting for Sandy.
Yeah. Actually, it will be, there you go, that's what was my head was thinking. First meeting on, for you, on the seventh at one o'clock. And then, um, we also have the Academic Scholars Institute Winter Fundraiser, um, at Prospect. And then the sixteenth is a student early dismissal with a holiday on the nineteenth, and that's a parent-teacher conference day, so it's a holiday for students. And we have that one also tentatively held in case, um, Mr. Honaker and Dr. Hornick decide that we need additional budget work session, and then our regular work session on the twenty-sixth.
Ms. Byron?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we have a head start meeting on February twenty-sixth and March eighteenth as well.
February twenty-sixth and March eighteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I will add those on there, thank you.
Thank you.
So then moving ahead to March, we have our regular meeting on the fourth, it's, um, a student holiday on the fifth and a t...
Presidential primary.
For the presidential primary, and a teacher professional development day. And then on the fifteenth, another student holiday and teacher work day.
End of the nine weeks.
Oh, because it's the end of the nine weeks. And then on, um, March twentieth, Ms. Dawson has another prep meeting. And then on the twenty-fifth, the work session, and then the Orange County Education Foundation Board meeting on the twenty-eighth. I believe that's Mr. Rickert.
Yeah, Rick.
So, would you like me to go on to the agenda for the fifth?
Go on with the agenda. Was there any questions or concerns with the calendar? Anybody have any conflicts as far as the board meeting dates? Okay, all right, thank you.
And then, uh, moving ahead to the draft February fifth agenda, we will have, um, our public hearing that evening on the operating budget for the upcoming school year, and we'll also have regular public comment. We'll have action on two items discussed tonight, and there was a third, uh, it was the resolution, so we'll add the resolution.
No, we're good with that one. What you, what we have is we have these two, and then we're going to have the MOU, um, when we, when we address the changes in the MOU.
Oh, it's the MOU, okay.
And then Ms. Anderson is going to...
Adjust the letter.
Adjust the letter and bring that forward, so those would be the, right now, those are, those are trending to be the four action items.
Okay. And then we just have a placeholder for superintendent's recommendations. If there are none, by the time we get to that meeting, we'll just remove that header. And, um, again, another placeholder for board member comments, and then just regular personnel, um, closed session at this time.
Great, thank you. All right, um, may I have closed session certification, please? Or a motion, I'm sorry, closed session motion, please.
Pursuant to two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session. We are in closed session. Do I mallet first, or then I call for that, or do I?
Yes, because you're calling us back to order, yeah.
Bring our meeting back to order. Ms. Dawson, may I have a closed session certification, please?
The Board will reconvene an open session at which time the following motion will be adopted. Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Ms. Byram, roll call vote, please.
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting the second.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Quintern?
Aye.
Mr. Rickert?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows, five yes votes and no-no votes.
Thank you. Deposition of Personnel Actions, Dr. Hornick, does this come with your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am, recommend approval of the Personnel Actions as prevented, as presented in closed session.
Superintendent's Recommendation, recommend approval of the Personnel Agenda to include retirement, rescind resignation, resignation, employment, salary adjustment and transfer, and extracurricular and coaching appointments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that is the end of our meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Chelsea.